Manana Sizou, good morning colleagues. We're back in session, back from recess. We're still on the second reading. We're on Bill number 175-37COR as substituted on the floor. The sponsor has completed his opening statements. Now we'll recognize anyone else on the bill. Vice Speaker, you're recognized. Just for information, our aircon is down right now. They are working on it. We don't have an estimate yet how long it will take. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Sizou Sumasi, Madam Speaker. Manana Sizou, it's to you, to our colleagues and to the listening audience here on Guam. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on Bill number 175-37. It's authored by the good Senator from Tamuning, Senator Chris, and then the sponsors, cosponsors to that, Senator Blas, Senator Lahon, Senator Fisher, Senator Dwayne. And I say that because I'm hoping that I could get included in that sponsorship. Madam Speaker, thank you again. But I would like to start by saying, before I get into the meat of 175, it's one of the most basic tenets of the Guam Legislature, and indeed, any lawmaking body in America must be that we govern by consensus. That means the majority of us makes decisions, takes positions, and approve actions in this body. One single senator, no matter their title, should not have the power to pass a bill or make a bill fail. It's with this spirit that I voted for the measure to be pulled from a committee and substituted the measure. To the listening public, this is not the usual process of hearing, amending, and considering legislation. But I believe the public statements made about why 175 was stalled in committee made it clear it would never be reported out at the cost of landowners who simply want to build homes on the land left by their parents. I thank the author for keeping my office close as this legislation was amended to incorporate the concerns of citizens who rightfully want to protect Guam's most precious resource, our freshwater aquifer, which supplies an irreplaceable amount of drinking water for our island of Guam. Madam Speaker, the version of 175 before us takes on board the opposition expressed in mass petitions. I believe most, if not all, senatorial offices were copied in specifically increasing the density of septic systems over the aquifer. So, Madam Speaker, according to this new version of 175, the law will remain the same in allowing currently used septic systems to be installed over groundwater protection zone at a maximum of two per acre. The law will only change for decedent lots, which will still be kept at four per acre, but only if these four units are connected to septic systems that reduce nitrate. I think the fact that this change was so easily drafted and adopted shows that this body was willing to hear the understandable feedback from our community and amend Bill 175 to protect our environment better. And any rumors or assertions to the contrary was either misguided, misinformed, or misleading. For far too long, Madam Speaker, are people who want to turn the gift of land from their parents into gifts of homes for their children have been stuck in regulation purgatory. Yes, I said regulation purgatory. This bill enacts meaningful updates to our law so that the construction of these new homes can happen responsibly and sensibly. Madam Speaker, for the benefit of the body, before we recessed a session yesterday afternoon -- or no, I think it was 4:30-ish, a joint release issued by GWA, Guam EPA, and WEary was passed out to all the members showing their concerns about Bill 175 as introduced. But for any of us and anyone listening to the public who has not seen the update to that, all three agencies have clarified they now endorse this bill as substituted on the floor. And I thank Senator Duennius again for listening to the concerns and making sure that those issues of concern were addressed and substituted in. They wrote to us at about 4:40 PM Wednesday evening, or late Wednesday afternoon, "We appreciate the considerable time and efforts by Imina Trentai Shetty, Nalasa Toodan Guam for Bill 175-37COR as substituted on the floor. This substituted version adequately addresses our concerns with septic system density in unsuwerd areas within the groundwater protection zone and the northern Guam lands aquifer," concerns of which were conveyed as part of our previous joint statement released earlier this -- early in the afternoon. "We look forward to its successful passage and enactment," and that's where the quote ended. And I think, Madam Speaker, this endorsement shows without a doubt that this substituted version of 175 addresses the very heart of these agencies' concerns. Madam Speaker, I hope that this is clear enough to those watching and listening and those who registered their objections about the increased density of septic systems over the aquifer, that this version of 175 will not grant more septic systems than the current law allows, which is what this joint group of three agencies advocated for. In these halls, Madam Speaker, I've heard over and over again, sometimes directed at me, for us to check our bias and listen to the experts. Well, good colleagues, if the delay in opposition to Bill 175 was truly not personable, if it was truly rooted in the objections raised by our regulatory agencies, or because you were waiting for them to clearly state they are good with this bill, then I look forward to your vote to pass Bill 175 as substituted. But by all means, if you think that Guam EPA doesn't know what it's talking about, or Guam Water Works Authority, or WEARY, feel free to say so by trying to kill this measure, because to repeat a sentiment often thrown about in these halls at this point with what is now on the record, a vote against Bill 175 is a vote against our experts in real estate, environmental protection, water treatment and testing, and the families who just want to build on the land left by their parents again, and the families who just want to build on the land that was left by their parents. So, Madam Speaker, I'm humbly imploring all my colleagues to listen, to reason, to the experts, and to open their hearts to a proposal that without a doubt has changed for the better. Undangkuluna Sizou Sumasi, Madam Speaker. And again, this august body, the sanctity of this body, is to be able to deliberate measures for or against. And in the ultimate end, if our colleagues of a majority of eight, or over, or unanimous vote on an issue, then we respect the issue. But if you don't like it, let us agree to disagree and work with the process of how to get bills passed into law. So, undangkuluna Sizou Sumasi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of this measure, and I'm hoping that the good Senator from Tamuning will give me an opportunity to be a part of the cosponsorship. And I thank all the stakeholders who came, the families that are still outside. Manana Sizou, thank you for being here every day to hear this bill, and thank you for helping make a difference to make homes more available for our community.
On the bill, Senator Parrish, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I start, I'd like to request the fan be turned down because it's pretty loud. Thank you. Madam Speaker, members of the 37th Guam Legislature, less than 1% of the world's water is drinkable, and with increasing population consumption and degradation, people all over the world are struggling for access to clean drinking water. Guam is no exception.
Sorry, Senator, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Just, I don't know, if we could turn the mics up a little bit, I just can't. The fans are very loud. Thank you.
Sorry. If we can set back the time, please. Madam Speaker, members of the 37th Guam Legislature, the people of Guam, less than 1% of the world's water is drinkable, and with increasing population consumption and degradation, people worldwide are struggling for access to clean drinking water. Guam has been blessed with an abundant water resource from our northern aquifer that supplies over 80% of our population with drinking water to the surface waters of southern Guam, a water resource that we can call our own because we do not have to fight with other neighboring countries for it. Yet it is ours to lose if we over-extract, contaminate, or irreparably harm it. Water is life, and if we are to sustain ours and future generations, we must not lose sight of protecting this vital resource when solving this issue within our laws and correcting sins of the past, of irresponsible development that did not put in the proper infrastructure, water, some with water and no sewer, or some with no water and no sewer, or simply being unaware or conscious of our impacts to our precious aquifer. What we do above ground and release has its way of entering the soil and making its way into our drinking water. At issue is a conflict between subdivision law with its exemptions to put in the needed infrastructure and water quality regulations. In looking at Bill 175-37, from its introduced version of being an all-out assault on the northern aquifer to its substitute version of making decedent owners on equal footing with parental owners, they both have foreseeable impacts to our aquifer. No amount of gaslighting, coercion, or diversion tactics changes this fact and supporting evidence. In fact, the underhanded tactics surrounding Bill 175 should raise concerns, if not alert our community, that even our precious northern aquifer that is a basis of our health is negotiable. Bill 175 would allow the development of unsuwerd one-quarter lots within the groundwater protection zone for parental and decedent lot owners. This would result in a doubling, a doubling, 100% annual increase in wastewater loading even with type IV nitrogen-reducing systems. Guam EPA noted during the public hearing for Bill 175 that sewage leaks are meant to be fixed, but septic systems are a permanent leak by design. And due to their design, septic systems generally require maintenance and operation over time, and their individual parts do require replacement as they deteriorate. Type IV systems generally require substantially more operation and maintenance than the traditional type II systems. It is unknown at this time the magnitude and the number of quarter-acre developments that would occur over our aquifer, or the number of occupants per building or dwelling in these quarter-acre lots. Nitrate levels on Guam are in a precarious state. Nitrate levels in some parts of the northern Guam lands aquifer would exceed the half MCL value of 5 mg/L by 2029, within five years, just within five years. In 2023, GWA's monitoring revealed that wells in some areas, so just last year, GWA's monitoring revealed that some wells of the northern Guam had already exceeded half MCL value, resulting in regulatory triggers. So increasing density will exacerbate the current nitrate problem we have today. Per the 1982 Northern Guam Lands Aquifer Study conducted for Guam EPA, septic systems were identified as a main source of contamination threatening the northern Guam lands aquifer. The study attributed 40% of nitrogen contamination in the northernlands to onsite septic systems. The hydrologist, John Minx, suggested there should be one septic system per acre in order to keep nitrate levels below the minimum 4 MCL. Since then, that number has already doubled to below to allow half-acre lots with septic systems. So Guam EPA used Saipem as an example to show that increasing density of septic systems over a small area can lead to drinking water levels that are unsafe. Currently, no scientific evidence exists to support increased density of septic systems. On the contrary, data and evidence points to increasing nitrate levels with increased density of septic systems. According to a recent WEARY study, several modeling preparatory scenarios were conducted, including matching with production wells and ultimately simulating a non-suwerd system in a future housing development site. The future residential lots were a little under half-acre and a quarter-acre lot areas. Results for the proposed development show that increased development density also increases source intensity, and if near wells may easily reach the wellheads and breach into the protection zone. A scenario of 1/8 acre lot aerial density for residential scenario had a maximum contamination of 18 mg/L, which is way above what is safe to drink. And a half-acre lot area maximum concentration had increased to 8 mg/L, which is above the regulatory action limit. Based on the percentage of customers with water but no sewer connection and the amount of wastewater treated, approximately today, 4 million gallons a day of wastewater is released on Guam. 4 million gallons of wastewater is released on Guam, most of that over our drinking water source. WEARY studies show an increased trend of nitrates in 58% of water production wells, and many are already at 4 mg/L or greater. The 2021 Guam Water Works Authority cesspool and septic tank elimination study reported nitrate levels, and therefore prioritized their capital improvement projects for sewer connections for those areas near the wells that will exceed the half MCL or 5 mg by 2029. Again, increasing density development using advanced nitrate systems will increase the nitrates and implement or trigger regulatory enforcement. The nitrate maximum contaminant level was originally established by the U.S. Public Health Service in 1962, which was meant to prevent methemoglobinemia, or blue baby syndrome, in which nitrate contaminated well water when used to mix with formula results in the infant's blood not being able to carry enough oxygen from the lungs to the rest of its body, which in some cases leads to suffocation and death. Recent studies point to adverse health effects at lower nitrate levels that include increased risks of colorectal cancer and many cancer, thyroid cancer, and others, as well as developmental defects such as spina bifida. Guam EPA further testified nitrate is also used throughout the U.S. as a general indicator of the presence and degree of groundwater pollution. Septic systems, in addition to nitrate, are additionally responsible for a large variety of other pollutants which enter the groundwater through their ordinary operation. These pollutants include human wastes, household cleaners, laundry detergents, fabric treatments, pharmaceuticals, and a variety of emerging contaminants, and now the regulated per- and polyfluoroalkyl substances, or PFAS, known as a forever chemical because its resistance to breaking down in the environment, which have been found in Guam Water Works wastewater and are therefore expected to be present in septic systems. Expensive cleanup and treatment for increased contamination would come at the cost of rape pairs, per the public hearing testimony from Guam EPA and GWA. Increased contamination may include the shutdown of wells. Type IV systems are unapproved to treat contamination of other pollutants, including PFAS or other emerging contaminants. Our island already faces a PFAS contamination issue per GWA. GWA is set to spend $64 million to treat PFAS contamination alone, and there is a concern that the cost of cleanup and treatment will increase with an increase in density of septic systems. Research attributes septic systems as a substantial source of PFAS contamination. These environmental risks cannot be ignored for the sake of development. Claims that this bill with increased housing prevent our people from leaving island or that further development without proper infrastructure will somehow boost economy or inflated. The people of Guam cannot live safely or sustainably on an island with contaminated water. Remember Red Hill. Overall, landowners and developers' options are limited to increasing density of septic systems in order to build -- they are not limited to increasing the density of septic systems. In fact, building up to a quarter or six-acre lots would not be an issue with installation of proper infrastructure like public sewer, an effort that I have worked towards and my office has worked towards. It is our responsibility as lawmakers to ensure the legislation we pass does not pose any risk to the community, and circumventing or ignoring the studies before us of the human impacts to our aquifer is a gross misapplication of our duties to the public. Colleagues, let us make the right decision for the sake of our environment, our drinking water, and our people. And to this end, I would like to proffer some amendments to put health and safety of our people, so if I can have a moment's recess.
Manana Sizou, let's take a moment's recess.
Goodness, to do this, let's take a moment's recess.
We're back from recess. Senator Perez, you had the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, in line with protecting our most precious resource, I want to proffer several amendments. So, one of them, the first one being on line one, page 16, to add a new section to the bill to read, and it codifies a new section to be left up to the legal to add or engross. It states, "A new section 4813," and so forth, "automatic ban on new septic systems. If water quality after two confirmatory tests of any groundwater well within a radius of 1,000 linear feet from the subject groundwater wells, well or wells, test positive for the presence of nitrates at levels that exceed or levels that equal or exceed 50% of the United States Environmental Protection Agency's limits for safe drinking water, no new septic systems may be permitted. Testing shall be as follows: initial test, A, the initial test; B, a confirmatory test conducted at least 15 days but not longer than 20 days after the initial test; and C, a second confirmatory test conducted not less than 30 days following the first confirmatory test. The ban once established by the provisions of this section is permanent." And so I want to explain the 1,000 feet, and that actually comes from the definition of wellhead protection zone. And so in our Safe Drinking Water Act, the wellhead protection area means the surface and subsurface areas surrounding a water well or wellfield supplying a public water system through which contaminants are reasonably likely to move toward and reach such waterwell or wellfield, or the area within 1,000 feet radius of any potable water supply. And so this is pretty much in line with what the Safe Drinking Water Act has. And in order to ensure that our drinking water is safe to drink, it's important to have this, these tests be done. And also, I want to say that when we look at sustainable societies throughout the world, what they ensure is that there, there's, there's a, things in place that prevent it from what's called the tragedy of the commons. And so what the tragedy of the commons is, is that the public collectively uses a resource and collectively degradates it. And so this would help as a safeguard measure to ensure that we do not get to that point where our aquifer is now a tragedy of the commons, because we've all used it and we've all degraded it somehow, right? I, I think this is a, an important measure. When we're thinking about increasing density, like I said, no study confirms that increasing density will decrease nitrates in our water. And so what I'm really proposing is that we ensure our safe drinking water with this amendment. And I ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
On the amendment, Senator Dwyane, you're recognized on the amendment.
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. As I start to discuss my concerns with this amendment, I wanted to do one thing first, and that is to read into the record the statement from Weary, as well as Guam Water Works, as well as EPA. And this was on January 26, 2024.
Is that on the amendment, Senator?
Yes, it is on the amendment. It pertains to the amendment, Madam Chair. This is speech and debate. June 26, 2024, in the island of Guam, "We appreciate the considerable time and efforts made by Emeen Attorney Chetin and Lieutenant Guahan for Bill 17537-COR as substituted on the floor. The substitute version attached adequately addresses our concerns with septic system density in unsuared areas within the groundwater protection zone and the northern Guam lens aquifer, concerns of which were conveyed as part of our previous joint statement released earlier this afternoon. We look forward to the successful passage and enactment of this legislation." Madam Speaker, I also want to read, because there's a lot of information, and this pertains to the amendment, because this amendment, while maybe well-intended, really should be a standalone bill, so all the people of Guam can get all the information and not just something as serious as what would happen with this amendment is not debated properly in the public. From the Habana Report, and this is a lot of misinformation that's been going on about the Weary Report, and this has been sent to all senators, "It is not yet possible within the data at hand to precisely measure the absolute or relative contributions to sewage line leaks and septic tank discharge in any given location or the total amount of nitrate entering the groundwater. Under Nitrate Management Considerations, item 5 from this report, which was done by Dr. Habana at Weary, nitrate discharge from these septic tank systems can be eliminated only by replacing them either by connecting individual disposal households to non-leaking sewage systems, or," in caps, "by replacing conventional septic systems with modern advanced individual treatment systems that can reduce nitrate and nitrate GASM and two levels which is expelled in the air." Habana is referring to the Type 4 Nitrate Reducing System that is the subject of Bill 17537. Madam Speaker, I do not at all have a problem with the intent of this amendment, but let's talk about what the amendment would do, what the ban would do. The ban is not only permanent, but it absolutely shuts down all, all septic systems. I'm sure there are probably over 100 applications right now up at Guam Public Works for properties who have exactly what EPA asked for in the proper installation of septic systems, which is one on one-half acre lot. So, we are going to now tell those people, sorry, but because of this bill that actually is improving our system with a nitrate reduction system, we've, this finding as such, which has to be confirmed, even though how it would be done, particularly since it says next to a well, which we know the wells are the notorious hotspots because of the fact that it's, that's where sometimes low maintenance is being done, sometimes there's leakages, and sewage is not being treated properly. That does not mean that it has made it to the aquifer. Our natural filtration system, our northern lens, which is, also has a filtration system. In fact, Madam Speaker, if you go back to studies again, you will find that most of the hotspots are around wells, and that's why this study says what it says. There is no conclusive evidence right now that is in the areas where septic systems are, no conclusive evidence. And I challenge anyone on the floor to include the author of this amendment to produce it, if there is. I really would like to see that. So, the danger in this is, is really, could be arbitrary as well, but the bottom line is, this no longer discusses the, what's in this bill, which is to improve our system with nitrate reduction systems, but further says that we want to now, we want to now say, in the, in the scenario cited here, that all systems are banned. You know, I wonder why there's not a better amendment here to say, let's just, because I've done this bill very narrowly for decedent estates, very narrowly, to, to make sure we're doing this right, why isn't Senator standing up now and saying, "Let's just make the nitrate system compulsory on Guam for every system"? Why don't we just say, "No more septics"? All septics have to be nitrate reduction systems. That would be a progressive way of thinking. That would be a way of thinking to where we're really trying to find solutions and not identify the few hundred families here as the demons of poisoning our aquifer. So, may, very well-intended, and I would think that if the finding that's contemplated here, I would think that it would have to be a comprehensive study and not just next to a well, because wells, a lot of times, are co-located with sewage areas, which means if, you know, if it's like in your garage, you drop oil, when you're changing your oil in the, in the carport, it doesn't mean that your yard is contaminated. So, I think we need to exercise some caution here. Like I said, while well-intended, I respect the mover for this discussion, but this is something that should be a standalone bill so that all regulatory agencies can come down and discuss this, especially in light of the fact that they've come out and clearly said this legislation is supported by the big three, and the fact is, is that they will continue to do their studies. So, with that, Madam Speaker, I respectfully object to this amendment.
On the amendment, Senator Titigui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I commend the author of this amendment of ensuring the most important thing that everybody should be concerned about and be at the forefront is protecting our water. That's what everybody should be putting at front, not anything else, but protecting our water. And that's exactly what she's trying to do in this scenario. And I even too thought the last speaker was saying, "Why not make a Type 4 nitrate septic system for everybody"? I agree. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, he also claims that there's 2,000 people who are still not hooked up to sewer system, 2,000, over 2,000 individual homes, that may be causing a lot of the contaminants into our aquifer. As far as any filtration system, well, we're having issues with that too. Let's not forget, we don't even have laws for quarry. People can go and dig up all the limestone that helps filterate our system. People can go and dig up all the limestone that helps filterate our system. And this body couldn't even get that bill through to provide even more protection for our aquifer. We're stripping our limestone. Then what happens? You know, the author of this amendment is not only a senator, but was a science teacher. So if there's any data or information or how to understand what is really going on with our aquifer, she knows it. I had the opportunity last night, as well as this morning, to talk to EPA. And there are some things in here that they would like to see amended. It's not perfect, but we better make sure that this bill going through is as perfect as it can be to protect our water, because that's first and foremost. So Madam Speaker, at this time, I request that we go into the Committee of the Whole to bring in EPA, to bring in Weary, to bring in the other agency, regulatory agencies, EPA, Weary, and who else signed on this, GWA, to answer our questions instead of taking, you know, comments or, you know, these little inserts of, oh, we support 175. But there's a caveat behind that. And I know, because I called them last night. One of the issues that was the biggest concern I had was, are they going to stand to lose federal funding? Because what they're doing now is increasing the nitrates in our water system, in our Are you going to lose funding? So this morning, I got a reply because I made sure they called the Region Nine. Last thing we want to do is lose federal funding for EPA because that's how they're fully funded. I mean, we had the same scenario at Homeland Security, the concerns with that. Now if EPA goes down that same road, then we have an issue. So if you truly, truly want to make sure that this bill that we are putting through here today is done with answers to our questions, with done with data that's proven, that's given from the mouth of these regulatory agencies, if you truly want to make, make sure that those people who are concerned, can I, can I get the camera up there on the, on the balcony? Can you let the people know that there are people up here on the balcony with their signs, protect our aquifer, protect our aquifer, take? It, it's just, there's a whole different group of individuals.
Yeah, and the camera should go in the gallery as well.
Yeah, put it up there. You know, there's a whole group. Sit down, Senators Duenas. I have the floor.
The camera should go into the gallery as well.
I have the floor. If you have a point of information, you can talk about it. But do it correctly. Do it correctly. And that is, I'm asking this body, if you really want to be sincere to the people of Guam who have pointed you in, to make them think, okay, if you vote yes on this bill, Ayade, you don't care about contaminating our water, then bring in the regulatory agencies. If Senator Duenas is so, you know, adamant about they're so agreeable to this, great, then there's nothing to hide. There is nothing to hide, my colleagues. Let's bring them in. I'm sure you have questions too, because we just got this bill yesterday, this revised bill. Bill 51, that we heard earlier, was sent back to the committee so we could have a public hearing, because it was substantially changed. One of the greatest changes in this bill was, it went from six lots of putting septic tanks on one acre down to four. So let's hear from EPA, why did they agree to that? Why did they agree to that? Let's hear about the descendants who want this land so they can build their, their property, their houses on it. Not that they want to take their property and build a septic tank and then next year they want to sell it off to a developer. Let's hear that, because that's a concern, and, and really, this is reality. Let's be transparent to the people of Guam so they too can understand what's going on with this bill. There are many people who are concerned, many. I, I think that's illegal. Senator Fisher, can I? Speaker, Speaker, can we have order in this? This is ridiculous. Senator Fisher continues to break the laws of this body, so can we please have it removed? Thank you. Thank you. Why don't you go stand up in the loft with the other people, Senator Fisher? If you're going to do that, stand up in the other loft. Camera?
Senator Titigui, you have the floor.
So if you guys are so worried and my comments are scaring you, Senator Fisher, then vote on bringing it, going into the Committee of the Whole. It's obvious my words are starting to hit a nerve here, because it's true. What I'm having to say is true. The backs of the people are going to have to, $70 million is the first amount that's going to come out when we have to rectify or mitigate any poisons that come into these wells. $70 million, that's going to go on the back of our people. Let that go out in the media. This could cost our people of Guam $70 million, which means it's going to go in your water bill. That's right. That's the reality, the hidden stuff that we're not putting out and that the people of Guam need to hear. So let's be transparent, because it affects every single person on this island, not just those who have a special interest, but everyone. So again, I make a motion that we go into the Committee of the Whole, call EPA, call Weary, and call GWA, so it's clear to everyone, and I'm sure I'm not the only one that has I have no problem with this amendment, but I would have some questions too, when it comes, come to this amendment and what it would do with EPA. What kind of enforcements it would take? Do they need financial assistance in order to do this amendment? And if you have a chance, my last thing, Madam Speaker, if you guys had a chance, go to Chapter 48, Title 10 of the Guam Code Annotated. Go there and, and read, Section 41, I think it's 4104, and look how antiquated that law is. They still refer GWA as the, what is it, utilities company? That's like 30 years old, people. The law is like 30 years old. It's time to modernize this law. Look at the chapter. It needs adjusting. There's technology out there, yes. So let's modernize this law. Let's bring them in. Don't be afraid, don't, don't hide the people, the, the ability for the people to listen to what EPA and Weary has to say, or the inability of every single people watching this body. So I make that motion, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
On that motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole and bring in Guam EPA and Weary, is there any objection?
Objection.
There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Yes. All in favor, please raise your hand. Six, motion fails.
Then every amendment that comes through here that's going to do something to help protect the water even more will probably be not voted on. Shame on everyone who did not vote for the Committee of the Whole, so that people of Guam too have questions that they send to us by text. And I want to thank the audience. I receive texts all the time while we're in session because they have questions. And now, everybody, look who did not vote for the Committee of the Whole, to be more transparent about this very, very, very important bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else that'd like to speak on the amendment? Vice, are you raising your hand?
Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak on this amendment as proffered by the Senator, I think from Baragota, right? I, I, I just want to share, Madam Speaker, that right now, based on information and presentation that we have today, we have a rare, a very rare consensus on substitute Bill 175, where stakeholders who are at odds with one another are now on the same page. Again, I will note, like Guam EPA, Guam Water Authority, Guam Association of Realtors, and Weary are all endorsing the bill as we have it before us, which is substituted. I hear some of the statements are going out, and I'd be sad to say, if we're going to say as an august body, do you think the administrator of Guam EPA is lying? Do you think that the general manager of GWA is not telling the truth? Do you think that the interim director of Weary is lying also? And then you have the Guam Association of Realtors who's out there, who says that they support the substituted version. There's no lying and thinking. Madam Speaker, if we had to look at the contaminants here on our island of Guam, believe you me, there's a lot of it. And yes, we need to, as our responsibility, protect the vital gift that we have, that we were blessed with. But I will also let you know that modern technology sure has a way of working and making things better. Things that are antiquated can be updated. Things that were bad back then may not be so bad today, and vice versa. Quit berating all of us on this floor on how, if we don't vote for something, we're bad people, if we vote against what you believe in, you're completely wrong and the people are going to punish you. The people are listening. Yeah, I too am getting calls saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. The Lizama family from Jiggo, the Pangolinas, and then I, I also have people calling me saying, I'm going to put them on the spot, the Nelson family, who's saying, thank you, who have been big activists, and say, be careful with what is being presented, we live it. Madam Speaker, I, I do not want to jeopardize this harmony by approving amendments who do not have the white buy-ins this legislature now has. So if the mover of this amendment would yield, I'll ask the question, if you allow me?
State your question.
Thank you. I would like to try and gauge the support behind her amendments. So I want to ask, has the Guam Water Works Authority, or Guam EPA, or Weary reviewed and endorsed this and your other amendments that are being proffered this morning?
With the sponsor yield to that question.
I do, Madam Chair, and I think it's really odd that with the statement that came out, that they ignored the process of the legislature.
Madam Speaker, just a yes or no, please.
In my own way?
Please proceed.
I have the floor. So, I mean, it's really odd that the statement that came out really...
Madam Speaker, if I may, on a point of information, my inquiry was to ask on a yes or no, if she received documentation from...
You're asking her to yield. She's yielding.
Yes, yes or no. That was... I'm only asking for a yes or no.
Are you asking her to yield?
I'm asking her for a yes or no.
You cannot control what they say. We've seen that all yesterday, all throughout the debate on every other bill.
Then I will go ahead and move on, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
I will go ahead and move on further. The other thing is, has the Guam Association of Realtors reviewed and endorsed this and your other amendments? Again, she'll try and justify it with what's been given, and I know that the answer is no, because we, not just the Oversight Chair, we as senators have the opportunity, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, point of order, Madam Speaker.
We have the floor.
Point of order, I have the floor.
What is, you're...
I have the floor.
Are you raising to a point of order?
I have the floor.
What is your point of order, Senator?
That I have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I have the floor.
She's stating a point of order, which is allowed by our rules to interrupt a speaker. What is the point of order?
The point of order is, I had the floor when she interrupted me, and I, I didn't relieve myself of the, I didn't finish my statement.
Madam Speaker, I will end that. I don't think it should be noted that she should speak, because I only asked for a yes and no.
You asked her to yield, and she yielded.
I stand, I don't want her to answer to that. I withdraw the question.
All right, anyone else who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Barnett, on the amendment.
Ayade, ayade. I rise in support of the amendment. It looks pretty simple to me, we're saying, hey, there's this new technology, but if we test it and it's not working, na para, what's wrong with that? But you know, this body this week, we don't want to test the weed, we don't want to test the edibles, we don't want to test anything. I don't understand the opposition to it. Out of one side of our mouth, we're saying, oh, we want to protect the aquifer, we don't want to drink autumn taki, but then out of the other side of our mouth, we're doing things to ensure that there's a good possibility our people might just be not only drinking autumn taki, but showering in it as well. People getting red up in here. And I don't know if it has anything to do with, you know, with some of our colleagues are in here saying, hey, full disclosure, I know somebody who sells these septic tanks, but you know, I'm not going to help him sell them, but hey, I could get you a good deal. You know what I mean? It's just, it's interesting to me, how many hands are on this and how many, it just seems like there's a lot of things influencing this outside of this body, whether it's upstairs or in the lobby. But I think on its face, the amendment is very simple. We're simply saying, hey, if this technology is so great and we test it and the results don't match up with the promise of the technology, then let's put a stop to it and regroup. I think that's very prudent. I don't think it's irresponsible, and I think it's an amendment that the people of Guam deserve to ensure that we maintain water quality in our very limited space that we have here. So Sidoz Masi, Madam Speaker, and I rise in support of the amendment. I'm not sure what good that's going to do. It kind of seems like this is going to be one of these bills like we've seen before, where you have some members in here who want to earnestly, in good faith, try and make the bill better, and then you have others who are, you know, running out there and getting their amendments approved by outside interests. So ma'am, thank you. Sidoz Masi.
Sidoz Masi. On the amendment, is there anyone else that'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Sinicolas, you're recognized on the amendment.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Mani Luozan Manainaho. Who support Estina, Nadibi, our E.T. amendment, was support Estina Dibi. So Estina, Nadibi, for Corihi, I nilatzin, Esti nagubetamentu. You know, sometimes I bounce in and out of tomorrow, and I do it, and I also want to explain in simple terms how it affects us, and I normally use my personal experiences. This bill and this prohibition, trying to weigh down the, the bill, and I object to this amendment, and I'm probably going to object to every other amendment. Lo Estina, Nadibi, eh? And I'ma ta Esti manainata. Timma, timma potti itano. So timma, aliga uya judan abugao. The Esti offer, the, Esti na opportunita, the tonigmona. So ta, ta Corihi offer, inilacita, Esti nagubetamentu. Za tarkorihi hafa inilacita esti nagubetamentu. When I was a young boy, my auntie had a property, about one acre lot. And this is not antitita, by the way. And you know, we weren't rich, you know? We were not poor. We were not rich. We didn't... But they never had, they never let me want for anything. But we were not rich. We couldn't afford a lawyer. And so they, before she passed, she never sought the help of the lawyer because just didn't have money. You know who this is helping? Esti adudu de esti na 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 bill, edima mobli na manainata. Those of our elders who passed and did not have the opportunity to seek because of their, you know, inability to pay a lawyer, to subdivide and properly give their children property. That's what's at stake here. What we want to do is we want to allow these people the opportunity to develop their land if they properly went through probate. My family, my cousins, still, you know, they marked out their piece of property. One has a little piece of property, and I think they divided an acre into four. And I think to this day, they still cannot afford to properly probate this. But should they get a proper probate and properly subdivide this property, this bill, this bill makes it so, so that they can live a dignified life. And I object to any amendment who disallows that from happening. I was looking at my computer in here, and you know, I always try to default to Singapore. It took Singapore 30 years to fix their sewage system. Took them 30 years. How many of us, our longevity, our system of government doesn't allow good leadership to stay in power for 30 years? You know, you got to keep running every eight, every four, you know? But continuity of leadership is very important in making things right. Some of us might not be here long enough to see proper policies and see the technologies move. And so, but you know, I'm hoping and praying that we have well-meaning future leaders come about. But I think, I think we need to tone it down a bit and bring justice to these folks that have been wrong, and allow, allow this bill to pass. And this, and I, again, I said, again, I object to any amendment that moves this bill forward in its state with the support of the agencies that are involved. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, Senator Brown had her hand up, then Fitzpatrick Fisher.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I don't know if it's the air conditioner going down or the energy in the room. There's a lot of going back and forth here among colleagues under their breath with each other. And you know, you kind of got to wonder why? Why on this issue? It seems to make practical sense. I mean, we're just talking about, you know, the need for some families to be able to build on their lots up north, and you know, what's the big deal? Septic tanks, and it's at a, you know, a more advanced level, and that should be it. What's the problem? And why are some of our colleagues speaking so passionately? And why are other colleagues being so accusatory about what those motives are? Because, Madam Speaker, we are talking about our drinking water. And unfortunately, how this has been played out over the last many weeks is it's, if you don't support this bill, you don't support our families, and you don't support families getting homes built. You're anti-house if you're pro-water. And we can be naive, we can stick our head in the sand, because you know what? We just had that bill not too long ago, as one of our colleagues mentioned, and it's not a question of imposing our will. It's not our will ultimately that will ride. It'll be the people's will that will ride, and certainly they can make their own decision. You know, in a few years, Madam Speaker, most of the people in here won't even be in the Guam legislature. Just a matter of time. It's always time. Time goes on longer than the rest of us. But we're talking about drinking water. We're talking about the northern Guam water lens. And if everyone wants to bandy about all the expertise of WEary, Guam EPA, and that this is all good, let's also acknowledge the reality and why I do support this amendment, Madam Speaker, is because we do have ongoing threats to our drinking water in northern Guam. That is a challenge for us today. It's a challenge for the next generation and the generations to follow, is how are we going to address development on one hand and ensure that we can protect our drinking water that we all depend on? It's not optional. There are a lot of things in our lives we can do without. Drinking water like air, like food, is an absolute necessity of life. The very existence of all of us here, the economy, the military buildup, everything that we have going on, is incumbent upon our ability to provide safe drinking water, which worldwide is at a threat. If you ever look at the issue of water, it's not just us to worry on Guam. Worldwide, it's a threat. There's many people that don't even have a clean jass of water to drink on any day. So that's the challenge that we're here about. That's what some of us can be very passionate about, of wanting to maintain and ensure safe drinking water, because we are already, Madam Speaker, contaminating the water lens. We were just here last month to address the bond bills from the Guam Water Works Authority, who wants to borrow up to $800 million. Hopefully, they'll be able to get some of those in grants, but compared to what the people of Guam are going to have to pay, the people of Guam are going to have to pay for all that cleanup. And the idea that, oh, well, it's already contaminated, so we'll just clean it up, because that's what we can do, right? Modern technology will address that concern, you know? It always does, right? That's the solution. Well, I hope so. Nobody in here is the mastermind that's going to be doing that. Let's not kid ourselves. That's why 28 years ago, in the 24th Guam Legislature, I introduced legislation which created the hydrogeologic survey, so that we could have the experts at WEary, not just those then, because most of those professors that were there then have all since retired. Dr. Jensen, who most recently retired as the head of WEary, was one of them. But to ensure that we study, we manage, and we also learn and educate new hydrogeologists in this community, to help do exactly that, learn, map, train, study our water lens, not just here but in the region and wherever else their talents may take them. That was my view and investment of the future, and here we are 28 years later, and the challenge is even greater. I looked at the GWA report. I looked at their maps that they surveyed in northern Guam of many key areas surrounding water wells. And while a number of these areas are sewed, I'm a little concerned about a lot of spots in between where houses exist that certainly don't even have half an acre yard, in what looked like existing subdivisions that were divided up, that have no sewer connected to them. So that kind of concerns me, because that tells me that houses have been constructed without complying with the requirement of hooking up to sewer. How does that happen? Who's asleep at the wheel? Be it DPW or Guam EPA, both departments of which I've managed. Somebody's sleeping. If those, if those maps indeed and surveys that were conducted by GWA are exact, I don't know, I don't have any reason to question their findings. But if that's indeed the case, we already know there's existing threats in areas that should have been sewed. And what are we going to do to tell our residents now who are not sewed in these areas? Oh, you paid, you know, $10,000, $12,000, whatever it costs to construct a septic tank? You have to hook up to the GWA, which should have been required at the time of construction. Because considering where those houses are, I highly doubt, you know, because they're almost in perfect aligned squares, that those houses were built after the sewer lines were constructed. What are we going to... That requirement's been in the law for many years. If you're within 500 feet of a sewer line, you're supposed to hook up to a sewer line. That's existing issues, because look at, if you look at map after map, there's the sewer line, and there's all those blue dots that indicate that those homes are only hooked up to GWA's water system, not to the sewer system. So this is not an issue of being anti-house construction. And yes, we can play that card, you know? There's that macho moral side that goes, oh, yes, you know, the land that is being passed on by our parents and our grandparents to us. Well, at some point, the Guam legislature again decided that, well, if you don't have enough land for all your children, we'll allow you to do substandard lots. That's when some families had land to pass. A lot of families now don't even have the house to pass. Most cases, the house gets sold because there's not enough land to subdivide among the children. But we sell the family house because at least we can divide the money. Because for some, that's what they want. That's the money, right? It's got to be something. Sad to say. But that's the concern. And because of that issue, now everybody else is burdened on Guam with that issue. Because think, not colleagues, we walk out of here and we just came up with the perfect solution, because the threat is here. And yes, I appreciate the comments by the sponsor of this amendment, because when she drew out, looking at the scales and what they're anticipating, it's in our lifetime, within the next five years, we're going to start exceeding these levels of safe drinking water. And I'd hate to see once again if, good gosh, the federal government has to come in and intercede again, like we couldn't manage our prison, we couldn't manage the disposal of our municipal waste, so they came in and took over the landfill construction, like we couldn't properly address behavioral health, so they had to federally come in and take over that too. What's next? Homeland security? No, maybe they'll just stop providing the money, as they may have already, and we're just not been notified by the administration. So colleagues, let's not kid ourselves about this issue. I don't worry about what the public, the public will decide on their own, what they're going to do. We leave, they, gosh, they get to do that soon. I hope they vote at least. If nothing else, please come out and vote. The reality is, we have the responsibility as caretakers for a time, and it is for a time, that we are hopefully making the better decision. But if we want to demonize those of us that want to ensure that we have safe, clean drinking water over ayah day, you don't care about the people. You don't care about the people's ability to build their homes. Well, what about the people that need to drink safe, clean drinking water? I think that includes everybody on Guam, because water is a necessity of life. And don't think for a second that this is the solution, my dear colleagues, because we're also continuing to contribute to the contamination. Now, yes, people are not really going to feel it, they're not going to feel the magnitude of it, Madam Speaker, until they get their water bill. When they get their water bill, Madam Speaker, are they all of a sudden see... Because I have people now that come to me and go, "Huh? It's only two of us in the house. It's dark. Our water bill's $100. $100? What are you doing if you have four, five, six, seven, eight family members in your home? What if you're a restaurant? What if you're the car wash? What if you're a hotel that's struggling right now? I can't imagine what their water bill's going to be when that gets multiplied. It's going to be significant. And as I've mentioned before, it's going to come at a time when they are no longer going to see a subsidized power bill. So they're going to get hit from one side financially and the other side financially. And what are they getting hit for? Primarily to address the contaminants that already exist in our northern Guam water lens. So when you want to talk about technology, that technology ain't cheap. And if you think you're comfortable with the fact that your water's already been contaminated, hopefully it's been properly filtered, hopefully they're changing those filters on a regular, hopefully they're checking those water wells. I hope so. What are the odds? I hope so. I hope the Guam Water Works Authority is on their toes and doing that on a regular basis. But do you know? No, you don't. So if we think that's the safeguard to feel comfortable with, I'm not comfortable with that. So yes, this is going to be a continued heated debate this morning, going back and forth, but let's not pretend that somehow we have made the solution, and those of us that are speaking up in favor protecting our water lens are the bad people, because we don't really care about the people of Guam. Our job is to figure out how do we properly manage that. But we need to acknowledge to begin with...
Excuse me, Senator.
Sorry, Madam Speaker, I, there's a lot of drama.
Senator Fisher.
I normally think I'm the one doing all the drama here.
Senator Fisher, please don't interrupt the speaker.
I don't know what you're talking about. I was...
By yelling across the room while she's speaking.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for the instruction.
Ayah day.
Please proceed, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. As I was saying, if the intent is to create this divide and say that all of you that don't support this bill, don't support safe drinking... Because in time, un dia ne, Madam Speaker, maybe in the time of some of the political lives of some people here, they'll still be here. But like I said, my odds are fairly good in the next few years, most of us that are here will not be here. But we have a responsibility to ensure we make responsible decisions. How this bill came about, the tone, the process, the attitude, the negativity, you don't pass good bills this way. Because, ah, we got the votes, don't matter. Vote it down. Vote every amendment. We're going to vote every amendment down here today that we don't want, because we got the votes, we got the power. Yes, we have for a time the power of the people, but we need to make sure we're making responsible decisions. And when it comes to our drinking water, Madam Speaker, that should be non-negotiable. But recall, we couldn't even address proper clearing and grading. This is the same legislature that refused to address that issue. So we have irresponsible grading into our land, particularly in northern Guam, to extract gravel. Cascaune, as we call it. Remember the cascal every time we asked DPW to deliver it in the truck? Man, it's so white. It looks almost pure white. Even we here, this body, would not entertain and address that, even though we are putting direct access into our drinking water. Unregulated direct access into our drinking water lens, instead of allowing the natural process to filter out some of these contaminants. But did we entertain that here? No, because the powers that be and the monies that be said, "No. Ahhi. Munga. Timalaguzo eno. This is the legislature, right? My good colleague, Senator Barnett, yes, the ones that want no testing. Let's just move it on down the road, because now it's election time, I want to put this in my campaign ad. I support this amendment, Madam Speaker, because colleagues, yeah, it's up to you. Sure, whatever. You don't care about it, that's up to you. I do. I care about it. I don't just care about it today because this bill came up. I've cared about it 28 years ago when I first started in this body, because we do need to address the ongoing threats. And now the people of Guam have to pay for those contaminants now. And can you imagine, Madam Speaker, when the next increase comes? When the next increase moves forward? Yeah, let's see how happy the people of Guam are going to be with us then. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this amendment. Sorry, Madam Speaker, was passed out when I was speaking. I just wanted to do a further amendment to this amendment, the JBSP amendment on line one, page 16, that would change the word, the ban, the moratorium shall be in place based on the regulations promulgated by Guam EPA. I don't, I don't think I need to further edificate on this amendment. I think it's purely clear-cut in terms of what the intent is.
All right. On the amendment to the amendment, is there anyone that'd like to speak? Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, this is one of the...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, this is one of the solutions that Brian Bearden, formerly of Guam PA, he recommended. One of the ways we can address increasing nitrates is, you know, we need to look at the aquifer before we start really implementing new septic systems. And I think, you know, I feel in the spirit of being proactive and collaborating with my colleagues, I think this is a good amendment to amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Burnett, on the amendment to the amendment.
Yes, ma'am. I rise in support of the amendment. I think it's quite the environmental one-two, or just say one-one punch to have these two senators proposing this amendment. Also, I know it was stated that some of our colleagues are not going to support any amendment, but I would just say that, you know, to keep an open mind on this issue and in the spirit of collaboration, support this amendment. Because if you didn't support the amendment that this amendment is amending, this amendment to the amendment softens it a little bit and it goes from an automatic ban to a moratorium. And that allows Guam EPA to promulgate the appropriate regulations, ma'am. So it's a very reasonable amendment again, and I'm not sure why it wouldn't be supported by the body. Sidoos Masi.
The amendment to the amendment, Senator Taiti, agree, you're recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. You know, I always start off like, you know, good morning to my colleagues and good morning to you, Madam Speaker. And it was a rough morning this morning, as you can tell, in my last comments that I made. And really, with all due respect, it's about the importance of keeping our water clean, and I'm just very passionate about it. And I'm pretty sure, Madam Speaker, those landowners who want to have this bill go through so that they can build their homes, I'm sure they want, you know, the water to be clean too. They don't want to be part of any kind of contaminants. And I do stand in full support of this amendment, the moratorium. It was even brought up that Captain Bearden, who was very instrumental on, at EPA, on anything that had to do with contaminants in, on our island, was very, very passionate about this as well. I mean, he, of course, he's no longer at EPA, he moved to Saipan for family reasons. But what he left us was a wealth of knowledge and understanding of what is important. And I think, you know, honoring what he said by making it a moratorium, less evasive than, I stand in full support of it. Madam Speaker, I'd like to, you know, ask the body for reconsideration of the motion to go in the committee of the whole.
There's a motion to reconsider? On that, on the motion, whether we should reconsider, is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor of reconsidering that motion, please raise your hand. Motion fails.
Well, thank you. At least thank you for allowing that reconsideration to be even voted on with the author of this legislation. It seems it just, there's nothing to hide here. Let's just make it transparent. I'm getting texts too, again, asking why, why they're not reconsidering to go in committee of the whole, Madam Speaker. They too want to hear it. And they're coming in, the texts are coming in. There's nothing for this body to hide. But there is something to hide if you don't allow these regulatory agencies to come in and answer our questions. Makes you wonder. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment to the amendment, is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, Madam Speaker, I appreciate that the amendment here, the amendment is basically to provide, you know, the ability to be able to work things out as opposed to a ban, automatic ban, you know, the moratorium. But before we get to that, actually, I want to speak on the amendment itself afterwards. But thus, on my, with regard to the amendment to the amendment, again, you know, when the original amendment came up and it said automatic ban, that just, it brings a lot of concern. Because, again, I'm going to save my question with regard to the, how expansive this now moratorium would be. But at least it gives us an opportunity, it gives, if it were to pass, it gives them the opportunity to be able to work through the issues and not necessarily say that, you know, once it's been confirmed, it's banned. And in use of ban, it's almost, it's like, it can never be brought back up. It can never be reinstituted. So I appreciate that. Again, that's just my take on the amendment to the amendment. When we go back to the main amendment, I would like to be able to speak again. Thank you.
Sidoos Masi. On the amendment to the amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak? If not, then the sponsor of that amendment, Senator Brown, you may close on your amendment to the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I think it's a reasonable compromise. I'm just fearful that if we don't address it ourselves, you know, when we've had the opportunity to address our, our challenges, and we do have those in government, we've let those opportunities slip by. And then we end up having a federal judge tell us what to do and how to run our government. Sad to say, you know, is that because, you know, Big Brother's coming in or because once again, we failed our people ourselves? Because we couldn't make the right decisions that we needed to make at the time we needed to make them to prioritize. There's a lot of things you might be able to let slide. Protecting our waterlands and the quality of our drinking water is not one of them. I think this amendment to the amendment offers a compromise. I'm hopeful our colleagues are open. If they continue to object today, then I guess the deal's already cut, the decision's already made, and the votes are already in the bag. But this is something that is important. I'm sure I'll get up at every amendment if I have to to speak out, as some of my other colleagues have done this morning. This is not something we can compromise on. And if it's good legislation, if it's quality legislation, this isn't how you do it. The fact that we can't have WEARIE to ask questions, we can't have Guam EPA to answer questions about the reality because we want only what we see now and what we project to be what it is, that's not the reality of what's going on, particularly with the existing and growing contaminants in northern Guam. So I'm hopeful, colleagues, that you open your mind and would be considerate of this amendment to the amendment. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment to the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, an amendment passes. We're now on the, back to the original amendment by Senator Perez, as amended by Senator Brown. Senator Fisher, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. If we can recall, I mostly rise in order to associate myself, myself rather, with the remarks made by Senator San Nicolas. I thought they were very eloquent and get to the heart of what our people need. Backing up a little bit, it's fairly clear that buildings on a large piece of lot or a small piece of land neither defecate nor urinate nor produce gray water. People do that. The effect, whether it is meant or not, and I'd like to emphasize that I do not believe that the members of this body who are speaking in support of clean water are acting in bad faith. That's like saying you don't, you know, that's like saying you don't like puppies. Of course, everyone is for clean water. So I believe they are acting in good faith. I just think that they are acting naively. The problem, the major problem facing the people of Guam today is a loss of population. Senator Chris, in spite of the amendments, has tried to bring forth a solution to the drain of population on the island. We need to keep our people home. The effect of this limitation on these parental and decedent estates is to atomize families, force families apart, force families to leave island. We can't afford that. On the other hand, we cannot afford polluted water. Fortunately, we have a solution for that, and that also has been offered on the floor, and it has also been offered by Senator Duñez. This bill, far from being destructive of the island, is pro-family. It is pro-Guam. We need, Madam Speaker, we need people to stay home. We need them to go get educated and come back. We need the strength of the family units. We do not need to atomize families and thereby weaken the entire community. I'm proud to be a sponsor of this bill. I am proud to associate myself with Senator San Nicolas and his very compassionate approach to this problem. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. On the amendment as amended, is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you very much again, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, with regard to the amendment, excuse me, read this. If water quality after two confirmatory tests of any groundwater well within a radius of 1,000 linear feet from the subject groundwater wells, test positive for the presence of nitrates at levels that equal or exceed 50% of the United States Environmental Protection Agency's limit for safe drinking water. No, excuse me, no new septic systems may be permitted. First off, at first glance, you know, my first question, and if the author of the amendment would yield, is where did this scientific, is there any scientific backing for within a radius of 1,000 linear feet? Where do we get 1,000 linear feet?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
I do yield. It came from the Safe Drinking Water Act, and it's in the definition. So if I can pull it up, it's the wellhead protection area definition.
Okay. Second question along those, that same, subject groundwater wells, you can be singular or plural. So if water quality has two confirmatory tests, or are these tests taking basically at the same time, or are there, if it's more than one well?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, please.
It, well, basically, according to this amendment, initial test, so it, it just states at least within 15 days. So it doesn't put any kind of time limits between if it's--
Do it says 15 days or 20 days, no longer than 20 days after the initial test.
Right, right. So I guess 15 days, but not longer than 20, would be the initial test. So you, initial test plus confirmatory test. And then a second test, not less than 30 days following the first confirmatory test.
Okay, then lastly, this speaks to the broadness of this. So let's say you have a test, that the test, confirmatory test shows that there is an exceed, it exceeds the limit from one well, way up north. Does then, when you're saying, no new septic systems may be permitted, is it just within that area of that well, or is it just, or is it within the whole system?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Can you re, can you phrase?
Please repeat your question, Senator.
Can you phrase the question?
The question is, when you say, if the test positive for the presence of nitrates that equal or exceed 50%, according to US EPA limits for safe drinking water, no new septic systems may be permitted. No new septic systems near the, near that well, or is it throughout the system?
It would be within that well. So within that wellhead protection zone.
It doesn't say that here, Madam Speaker. And that's the concern that I have here is because, well, if you want to be able to concentrate your efforts in, in the area of particular well, that's one thing. But then, when you say no new septic systems may be permitted, and leave that open and broad, because there's nothing else in here that basically says otherwise. And, you know, for that, as much as I can appreciate, you know, the safety measures here, sometimes in our lack of being able to be specific about certain things, it could be interpreted otherwise. So, you know, unless that language is somehow made so it can be specific into that certain area, I can't support this amendment. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment as amended.
On the main motion, is there anyone who wishes, or on the amendment as amended, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Senator San Augustine, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I'm trying to understand the amendment. The very last line there, the moratorium shall be in place based on regulations promulgated by Guam EPA. I'm not a scientist, can you all, okay? I'm not a cloud renault. Number two, it was mentioned, EPA, GWA, WEARIE supports the bill. Number three, page 16, section 15, on the bill 175, a substitute on the floor, promulgation of rules and regulations. Guam EPA shall promulgate the rules and regulations to permit installation in this operation of type two and type four facilities as soon as possible as practical, and no later than nine months after enactment. Are we trying to do their job? Let's remind ourselves. The bill says, EPA, do it. EPA, regulate it. EPA, write the rules. EPA, make sure our water is clean. Last time I checked on our colleagues, I don't think nobody here lives up north but me. I live up in Jigal. I brought this issue many times about the water, many times about the sewer. Has anything been done? Zero. I live in an area in Jigal that is, we have septic tank. I've always asked the question, when are you going to bring the sewer line in so I can connect? Not at this time, that's all they tell me. They go, okay. Now we have a chance. I didn't think one of my colleagues mentioned, maybe you're related to the guy that's introducing, Dave DeMayer. Yeah, Dave DeMayer's my cousin. But I don't, I'm not in business with Dave. Okay? Let's start, let's end that discussion. I don't know how many of you are related to the Tytun family in Jigal, but that's the family I belong to. And many of the families that have communicated with the speaker and many of my colleagues here talk about this bill, said it's a good bill. It's a better bill today than it was initially and during what was presented. So, you know, I support the objection to the amendment. And pretty much, not everything yet. But number one, I'll go through the motions with every amendment. But folks, whenever you put an amendment, you say, let EPA-- you put an amendment, you say let EPA do it, then stop trying to be EPA. And then we want to talk about, let's, let's listen to the scientists? Hmm, there's not one scientist here. So let's listen to the scientists, and there's three agencies that really support the bill. I just move that we just continue on, and I'll support the author that said that he doesn't support the amendment, and we move on. Thank you.
Sido Smasi, Senator San Augustine, on the amendment as amended, Speaker Turlo, you're recognized.
Sido Smasi. I rise in support of this amendment, and especially as amended. As amended, it's so reasonable, practical, and actually makes common sense, that while we are making a huge exception by this bill to the number of septic tanks that we're going to put on an acre, particularly around water wells, that we are also going to keep track, make sure that we are not exceeding safe levels, and that if we are, we need to do something different. So it doesn't, it allows EPA, which the bill tries to allow EPA to do things, but with the bill's language, they're a little bit, their hands are tied. This amendment will allow them, it says the moratorium shall be in place based on regulations promulgated by Guam EPA, and it will allow them to, to control that, whether we exceed 50% of the U.S. EPA's limits for safe drinking water or not. We're right now under a consent decree, as one of my colleagues pointed out, under a consent decree by the U.S. District Court, by the U.S. EPA, for contamination to our water wells, for contamination of our water. We just, last session, passed a bill to allow GWA to go out for a bond, to fix pipes that are leaking, to protect our water wells, to put all kinds of processing in place for those that are connected to the sewer. They told us, of course, we're going to pay for this bond, we're going to pay it back. Of course, there's an impact to rates, but under the consent decree, if we don't make these amendments, we will lose control of our water. So if we are going to make, and this is not a, everybody else on Guam, everyone on Guam is mandated to hook up to a sewer if it's within your area, because we are all going to pull our weight, play our part, in keeping our water safe. Whether we can afford it or we can't, we are mandated, with the exception currently of parental subdivisions, because out of compassion, previous legislatures allowed a huge exception to what we already knew would be safer, they allowed an exception. And this bill will extend that exception. It's not a justice issue. That's silly. Justice to allow an exception? Everybody on Guam is in the same mandate, except for those under parental subdivisions. And I'm, we are all here, no one's arguing to remove the parental subdivision exception. I think we even have a consensus on allowing an exception for decedents. But is that justice? Is that justice for all the other ratepayers who are mandated to get on the sewer? Is that justice for all of us who will be potentially contaminated, particularly without this amendment that allows EPA to put a moratorium if we exceed our levels? No one plans that we're going to exceed our levels. This doesn't do anything immediately. All of those who want to do this immediately can do that immediately. But when our nitrate levels exceed safety levels, we have to give EPA some, a power, some authority to, in their rules and regs, deal with that in a very fair way, to give everyone notice, to plan ahead, so that everybody is sharing this burden of keeping our water safe. And that's, this amendment really just puts into EPA's hands additional authority to put a temporary moratorium when it is necessary. And without it, the converse, we don't want this amendment because the sponsor doesn't want this amendment, that just means we're going to close our eyes to the amount of nitrates that, not today, but in the future, may be going into the system, and we are going to tie EPA's hands from solving that. So if this bill is a solution, then let's make it a solution that EPA can actually Go ahead, expand your exemptions, but allow this safety valve, a safety moratorium. Anything less really, really makes me question the intention of the bill. It really leads us to wonder, what is going on, that even if we allow an exemption, that we cannot allow EPA to, to put a moratorium on it when our nitrate levels exceed safety levels? We would rather the U.S. District Court and the U.S. EPA drag us in there kicking and screaming and sanction us, require us to do all kinds of other things to protect our water, to process the contaminated water at that point, instead of just allowing EPA to do what is reasonable. This is, this is tied to the U.S. EPA's limits of safe drinking water, and it allows the Guam EPA to help us protect those. We need this amendment in this bill. If we are going to allow further exemptions, allow decidedly further nitrates into the system, there has to be a limit on that. And all of those who are, want this bill to be passed immediately so you can build your home immediately, this is not going to stop you, but this may stop those in the future when we are contaminated or up to more than 50% of the safe level. Don't you want that also? Or do we allow an exemption for few people at the cost of everyone else on Guam? This is the balance to that. This is how to balance that, is to give the U.S. EPA the authority to balance that. So please, I know, we could stand here and accuse each other all day, and it's very hostile, it's a very hostile working environment today, I'll tell you that. But we're here to do our job, this is our job, protect the people of Guam. You want to allow an exemption? Fine, protect the people of Guam with your exemption, and we can do both of those in this bill. It's reasonable, it doesn't hurt anyone, it doesn't even have an impact immediately. It will have an impact when we are at dangerous levels. So please, colleagues, let's do our job for the people of Guam, let's make them safe, let's give them confidence in what we are doing here today. Sido Smasi.
Sido Smasi, Madam Speaker. On the amendment as amended, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the amendment If there's no one else who wishes to speak on the amendment as amended, the sponsor may close. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do have a language to address one of the speakers' concerns, so I think it's being put on, being sent to the clerks at this moment.
All right. According to the clerks, it's being printed right now, so we'll take a one-minute recess. We're back from recess. The amendment has been passed out. Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So the amendment reads, within the wellhead protection area, so there was a question about, you know, where does a moratorium occur? Does it occur everywhere? And so what this amendment does, it limits it to the affected well, the wellhead protection area that, where the affected well is located. And so it states, no septic systems may be permitted within the wellhead protection area defined in Title 10 Guam Code annotated, Chapter 53, Section 53, 102, N.N., of the impacted water production well. And so we need to really think, think about this. Most of us woke up this morning, took a nice shower, right? With our clean water. Most of us drank water this morning that came from our aquifer. I think it's important to realize the invaluable asset that we have, which is our drinking And so we see communities, when their water becomes contaminated, excuse me, please, I'm speaking, so the destruction...
If we could have order in the back, please. Please proceed, Senator Perez.
Thank you. And so when we look at other communities across the world, they are struggling. They are struggling to get this clean water. Some of them have to walk miles, miles to get the water that they need to drink, that they need to cook with, that they bathe in. And so we must not lose sight of how precious our northern Guaman's aquifer is today. It's also important to note that we have a problem. We have a problem with pollutants in our precious aquifer that can be addressed today rather than wait till it gets worse, because once we have no water coming through that tap, it's too late. It's too late to make a change. The change is now, now that we know the information, and it will be at a more cost-effective If we have more nitrates, if we, if we have more PFAS in there, so this amendment doesn't even cover... So this amendment doesn't even cover PFAS. But if we have more nitrates and PFAS, how much more would it be to treat it than to prevent it from happening? And so this amendment really looks out for everyone, including those owners of land that want to be able to utilize this bill. It protects you. And so this amendment looks out for you as well. In regards to the regulations, I think that, you know, I got a response from EPA. They, they really like it. They like the fact that they can include this into their promulgation, which they have, rules and regs, which they have to do anyway. And so I think the time is now, not later. The time is now to make, to have, to take action. You know, as we are trying to, as, as the bill proposes to increase density, which I've stated, increased density leads to increased nitrates. I think that's pretty unrefutable. There's no evidence to support otherwise. And so I ask for collaboration, common sense, proactiveness by this body to ensure that we can continue to wake up every morning, take that nice clean shower that we all enjoy, drink that nice fresh cup of clean drinking water that we all need to live, and to use clean water to cook our food that we need to survive. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment to the Paris amendment, the amendment is, to add the words, "within the wellhead protection area defined in Title 10 Guam Code annotated, Chapter 53, Section 53, 102, N.N. of the impacted water production well." On that amendment, is there anyone would like to speak? Senator Blas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the author of the amendment, the original amendment, being able to clarify. And I think it was necessary if this, if this amendment were to pass and eventually if it were to become law. The question that I have here is, this is not just under the, this is, fortunately, under the assumption that we're just talking about type 4 septic systems, but as we speak, if you've got the proper land requirement, last, landmass requirements, that, and you are outside of the range of when you're mandated to hook up to the source system, you meet all the criteria, today you're able to put in your type 2 system. If this were to become law, despite whether it be type 4 or type 2, this also affects individuals who are now type 2 systems, who are, who are building and are, right now can only build a type 2 system there. This immediately affects them. Because it just says no on new septic systems. It doesn't say septic system, whether it's type 2 or type 4. But right now, our laws permit type 2. So we've got to be very careful in the consequence that we have here. Then it doesn't speak to, if it's contaminated in that area and that's the only system you've got, whether or not this can, this will affect you as well. Then it must be mistaken or anything, but you know, the reason why, one of the concerns, and I, I appreciate the conversations, the ability to have a recess, but for the systems, for economies of scale and the systems of being able to consolidate efforts, unfortunately, many of our sewer stop pump stations are located within 1,000 feet, linear feet of our wells, which could greatly contribute to the nitrates. So how do then, we penalize then a homeowner or potential homeowner because of a convenience in one hand, but the failure on another of a government to be able to separate out the two? Can recall what had happened up in Salo, our origin of Hanum Taki. That came from because the water well was right next to, the water pump station was right next to the sewer's pump station. Had nothing to do with the houses. So you've got to be very careful when we decide to do this. Because your unintended consequence is now you're putting an extra burden on people that have already got started and already got approved. Thank you very much, Mentor.
On the amendment to the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? If not, sponsor may close on the amendment, or Senator Brown, you're recognized on the amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Actually, rise in support of this amendment. I appreciate the assistance here of the sponsor to further facilitate and define. Because colleagues, you know, we can talk all day and I'm up to it. But if we think that not including this is going to address the issue, it's not. Those contaminants are already there. If we look at the calculations that have been put forth by GWA and WEARY and looking at where we're going to be within the next five years, and that's what they're projecting, that's why GWA was down here last month asking us to facilitate their bond to borrow all this money that our ratepayers of Guam, including all the existing homes that have water, which we assume every house has a water line connected to it, is going to pay. That reality is already here. I, I look at this amendment that's being put in forth as a preemptive effort so that when these contaminant levels rise to that, that there would be an automatic method of putting a moratorium in place so that they can determine how they're going to move forward. But colleagues, the reality of the contaminants are already there. And they're growing. And I'm sure none of us here want to make irresponsible decisions because, you know, we just simply want to say we're doing the right thing without ensuring with these exemptions that, as you relayed, Madam Speaker, in previous legislatures, that's how they dealt with the problem, to make it go away. You know, if your parent or your grandparent, you know, because back in the day, my grandfather's generation, they had hectares to pass on. Then when it got to the next level, they had maybe a few acres. Some don't even have the family house to pass on anymore with regards to land to subdivide among their children. So that exemption, as you relayed, was granted to give them that opportunity to take what land they had and subdivide it. But what ended up as a result was substandard lots. And because of that, that's something now the rest of the community is asked to be burdened with. Because a family was not able to provide acres and acres of land to meet the current requirements for septic. But yes, that decision was made. There's nothing we can do to undo what has been done in the past. But what we need to do is address, how do we mitigate it moving forward? Because we are putting additional strain. Of course, it would be ideal, I'd love to see more. So I live in Chalampago Oradot. I'd love to see a sewer line. Because that limits what I can do with my property, my half acre. Because if I could take my half acre and cut it in half, gosh, what would that land be worth? Several hundred thousand dollars probably. And I'll throw in an ocean. I could profit tremendously. I could take my parents' house, divide it up. They got another half acre. Why not? I could certainly personally profit from this. But I think we have to be mindful, and while our colleagues at one end say, this is what EPA says, this is what WEARY says, and I'm probably the biggest advocate for WEARY here, I can, I can put that badge on my shoulder here and say, yeah. But we can't ask them that question, can we? We can't ask them, where are these levels that are rising? In the next year, two, three, four, five is not that far away. But we can't ask them those questions because we've been denied by this body because they don't want to ask any more questions. They only want to say what they want to say and quote what they want to quote. But that ain't the end of the story. This is not the end of the story. And so I simply think this is a protective measure to put in place to mitigate an extraordinary circumstance that this bill would allow. But to demonize those of us that want to protect the waterlands against people that want to build houses, oh my goodness. Because colleagues, it's not something we've got to wait five, 10, 15, 30 years from now. You know, the bonds that we authorized last, God, not even three and a half weeks ago. You know, when I was in my twenties and thirties in legislation, I thought, I'll be around, hopefully, God willing, when that bond expires unless they pay it off sooner. Because I'm 30 years. Well, now, I know, 30 years from now, most of us, if we're still around, are going to be in our late eighties, if not pushing 90-plus. So when we make these long-term decisions that burden our people for that length of time, for many of us beyond our own lifetime now, I think we need to make responsible decisions with how we protect our resource. We don't have to look too far on where things are when you don't manage your resource. Just let's take a trip up north. How many of us have taken that trip up north? How many of us have showered in that water? I have. And it puts a sheen on your skin that's very different because of all the upcoating and overpumping and the high saline levels that are in the drinking water that's almost not palatable to drink. We don't have to go far, colleagues. So when we talk about the future, when we talk about investing in our children, in the quality of our island, and what is now almost, you know, pretty standard, especially the young generation now. When I used to talk about protecting the environment, you know, I got accused of being a tree hugger. I was the odd one. Because who cares about those things? We're about growth and development, progress, innovation. You know, back in the day, I'm going to tell us a story. My former boss, Governor Ada, when he was re-elected, wanted to put me at GIDA, Guam Economic Development Authority. Said it'll be good for Joanne. She'll, she'll really start appreciating the importance of growth and development in our economy. And certainly at a time when we had tremendous growth. How many golf courses and hotels were built during that time? That was one of the few times in our history, up until this pandemic and this military buildup, that the government of Guam did not have deficit spending because the money was flowing. So he recommended my education would be good at GIDA. His advisors interceded and said, not a good idea, Gov. I think she's going to scare our developers away. Do not send her to GIDA. So where did the governor send me? Where did they think would be a good fit for her? Our aggressive new cabinet member here? Well, they sent me to Guam EPA. And I'm grateful. That is the one job I can look back in my entire life and say, you know what, I thoroughly enjoyed that. I was there at the right time. Not only did it allow me to fulfill my appreciation and support for the environment, I got to learn a lot and I got to ensure the laws during that time were enforced. Because I'll tell you, if you think people out there sometimes, if given the opportunity, want to violate the law, unfortunately, you know, sad experience for me is that's not as uncommon as we'd like to think, including developers. If they can take a shortcut that cuts their money and keeps it in their pocket, they will do it. And the only thing at that time that we have protecting those interests is actually Guam EPA, that we have almost done nothing in 30-plus, gosh, 32, 33 years now, since I started there in 1991. I guess what, 33 years now? To even add more resources or more support or more staff? Because that's the one agency that has definitely not grown. They have just about as much, if not less, staff than I had when Fred Castro and I were at Guam EPA. So think about that, colleagues. How well are we regulating? How are, how are we ensuring compliance when we have existing residents, residential homes that are in sewer areas that have far less than a half acre yard that are not hooked up to sewer in northern Guam? Look at the GWA study, page after page after page after page. Is it because there's non-enforcement? I've got to wonder. I probably think there's non-enforcement because at time of construction of these houses, that issue should have been addressed. Because, you know, constructing a septic tank, if you've done one, is not cheap. You ever see the size of those septic tanks? They're almost 10 feet in the ground. They're huge for residential home that, you know, standard house, maybe two bathrooms. It's not cheap to build all that, those that are built out of concrete. It's like 10, 10 feet high. When you're standing up, look, it's 10 feet high. And then the maintenance, the cost of maintenance. The only advantage you have is hopefully the sewer's not going to back up into your house. And that's happened to some of our residents on Guam on the GWA system where the sewer has backed up into their house and they have had sewage in their house. But it's not, you know, the best solution. But here we are now with the opportunity to ensure a safeguard. And you would think that the desire would be, if we're going to make this exception, Madam Speaker, as you relayed a little earlier here on the floor, we'd want these safeguards in place. Because we're going to continue to add and add and add and add. And we're not just dealing with nitrates anymore. We've got all these other contaminants and emerging contaminants that have yet to be regulated, that the odds are fairly good, Madam Speaker, looking at the trend. U.S. federal EPA is going to include that. Can you imagine getting a 70%, 71% rate increase and then adding on to that more? Maybe 100% after? Because any additional cost to Waterworks, if they have to borrow money, is definitely, odds are fairly good, that cost is going to be burden on the ratepayers of Guam. But we're not talking about any of that today because we don't want to talk about that reality. That already is now. That's the irony of all of this, is the timing of these bills. Last session, we're authorizing the ability of Waterworks to borrow up to $800 million. And this session, we're talking about this bill that obviously will increase nitrates and other contaminants into the system. Because we're taking lots that are not standard, we're taking smaller lots that are allowed this exemption to build. And we're saying that this new Level 4 system will address all those concerns. Well, so far, I see it can maybe slow down nitrates, but it hasn't addressed, I don't see evidence that shows it's going to address these other systems. What's the longevity? What is that discussion? What are the longevity of existing septic systems? How are they maintained? Are they maintained? That doesn't include all the other areas in northern Guam where they don't even have septic systems and there's just direct discharge of feces and urine and other contaminants into the waterlands directly. Because who's out there regulating? Who's out there inspecting? Who's out there checking? Odds are fairly good, probably nobody now. Because I've been up to parts of northern Guam that don't have roads. And there's still a lot of land in between and houses in between that are not even connected to any type of proper disposal. My colleague here, Senator Blas from Baragada, brought up that there is a, and I'm going to ask, where is that? You know, I don't know if he knows, but I'm certainly going to follow up. Because I do want to know where that pump station is. Because there are existing regulations. You can't have these things within 1,000 feet of a water well. And I don't believe those regs have changed. That's what they were then. I'm very curious. I recall the situation up in Sinahania. At the time, Madam Speaker, you recall when the PDN used to print, gosh, 200, 300 days of Hanum Taki, as they referred to it? You know, an existing residential community like Sinahania that was really built up after the war, like the families from Hagatnia here, like my grandfather's family that had to move up the hill when they took over Agania, Hagatnia here. When they took over Agania, Hagatnia here, and moved the families up to Sinahania? Day after day after day after day. And imagine an established community like that, one of our older villages since the war. And that's what our people, that, that's not going to be uncommon for the future if we don't properly address this issue. And how long did it take Waterworks to address it? That they do it a month, two months, three months, five months? My goodness, it was almost a year. 300-plus days is pretty close to a year, last time I checked, counting. So I think when we close our eyes a day, as Mr. Herrera said, you know, and hutsu mi matamu. You know, when we close our eyes because we don't want to deal, we don't want to see. If we had honest debate on this bill, those protective measures should go forth without question. Because the burden's actually on Guam EPA to address that additional requirement. But not, we're not allowing that to happen. And we're not even allowing Guam EPA to come in and talk about their current contaminant levels that are growing and what are they going to do to mitigate? And we're not talking to WEary. Tables are empty up here and asking them, what are they or what can they do? Because they're not the regulating agency. It's not their burden to address how we're going to try and clean up and mitigate our contaminated water. Because they're not here because our colleagues don't have the time or interest to hear what they have to say. Or have the people of Guam hear directly from them what they have to say. So I think it's a responsible thing to do, Madam Speaker, is to pass this proposed amendment. And I certainly stand in support of it.
Situs Massey, Senator Brown. On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Titwe, you recognize.
Situs Massey, Madam Speaker. And thank you for allowing me just to stand in full support for this amendment. And I think it's, it's just common sense. You know, if there's pollutants coming from this well, that it needs to be shut down to protect our environment, to protect our people. That's just, that's first and foremost, to protect the people. We know that, you know, Waterworks will be testing these wells. And we know that once it reaches a certain level of the MGL, I call it, the MGL contaminants, that mitigation is needed. Already Guam Waterworks, on the consent decree, agreed already to pay $400 million. To use $400 million to address the unauthorized sewer discharge. And that's today. That's just today. $400 million on this consent decree. Madam Speaker, this is a very common sense and ensures, it just puts that added protection, that added protected to ensure that our people are safe by putting a moratorium. Not a ban, but a moratorium. It makes perfect sense. Makes common sense, which some people have told me, common sense is most uncommon. And that's a shame because we need to have common sense in this legislature. So other than that, Madam Speaker, I'm, I just don't want to see these nitrates going to a level where we have to mitigate with, before the anticipated time of five years, in five years. They anticipate to start mitigating out of nine wells. Six of them. It will exceed the five-point ratio in five years. This is something that needs to be moderated from today moving on. $70 million to start mitigating those nine wells if it starts with this contamination. We can stop that, Madam Speaker. We can stop that from happening. We have the ability to do so and this amendment will ensure that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment to the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? If not, the sponsor may close on the amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So in the states, they have, they actually fence off areas that are, they use for their drinking water. And so here on Guam, we don't have that luxury of cordoning off the whole northern Guam to protect our water. But what this amendment ensures is that, at least within the wellhead protection area, at least, where it is most likely that any contaminants that enter in this area is going to end up in the water well and then be distributed within, throughout Guam. And so it's really, it's really a proactive measure. It's a reasonable measure, considering the landmass that we have, considering that we live atop, most of us live atop of our aquifer. So it is, it is a proactive measure to ensure that the water is protected. And so I ask for my colleague's support. Thank you.
Situs Massey. On the amendment to the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that amendment passes. On the original amendment, we were on the sponsor closing on the original amendment as amended.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So again, I appreciate the debate on this amendment as amended. And I, again, I want to reiterate. All of us woke up this morning, took a nice clean shower, had a nice cup of clean drinking water. You know, probably cooked food from the water that came from the faucet that is safe to drink. But yet, so I think it's important that we don't lose sight, that we do not compromise such a valuable resource by ensuring that, and by allowing increased density, which leads to increased nitrates and other pollutants, that we are actually testing it to ensure that we can take these measures, these quick measures, to prevent further contamination of our aquifer, to ensure that the water is safe to drink. And this is under, this will, this will include, you know, corrective measures that can be done before it's too late. Because once it's too late, you know, how would we live, how would we continue to live on our island? We know there's a lot of increase of cancers here. You know, what ends up in our water definitely has an impact on the health of our people, of ourselves. Many of us know people that have succumbed to cancers. And many, and some of us have had cancer and have survived cancer here in this room. We have our babies, our youth also, that have yet to live a full life, that have a full life ahead of them. We need to look after their health as well. They are the ones that are most vulnerable to unsafe water. And this measure is a protective measure for them, for all of us here on this island that call Guam home. And I ask for my colleague's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment as amended, is there any objection? There's an objection. There's a call for roll call. Roll call. Three calls for roll call. Kirk, please take roll call on the vote on the amendment by Senator Perez as amended twice. Situs Massey.
Senator Burnett. Senator Burnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, nay. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, nay. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Parkinson.
The Sergeant-at-Arms, please call Senator Parkinson. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to excuse members not present.
On the motion to excuse members not present, there's been an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. That motion fails.
Madam Speaker, I move to recess until 2:00 P.M.
There's a motion to recess. Is there any objection? No objection? Objection? Is there an objection? Please raise your hand. If there's an objection to recessing, we're in the middle of a vote, please, all in favor of recessing, please raise your hand. Motion fails. If the, Sergeant, Senator Parkinson was here. If you could just let me know the status, please, Sergeant-at-Arms.
According to the rule, if a member refuses to vote after two minutes or passes three consecutive times, then they will be voted as nay. They will be indicated by the clerk as a nay. So we will proceed.
Madam Speaker, on a point of information based on that, it is not the, the senator who doesn't want to vote or not vote on the amendment as in, the senator is not present at this time for reasons maybe beyond our control. So before we do that, I'd like to look at other legal measures that are in our standing rules that allow for those who are leaving for other activities. I myself have an emergency at 3:00 P.M., so I ask you.
Senator, this is not a point of information.
It is a point of information because you're, you are, you are denying the right of a person to be called in or to be out for a reason.
We are voting.
Madam Speaker, I'm just telling with all due respect.
As indicated by the rules.
You have to exhaust the opportunity, Madam Speaker, to have our Sergeant-at-Arms give an opportunity to find out where, where the senators, where our colleagues are. That's the least we can do as far as collegiality and respect for those senators not in that building.
I have utmost respect. These senators were here this morning and I'm asking the Sergeant-at-Arms to call them.
Then accept the excuse on the floor for not here.
They didn't get enough votes.
On a motion to reconsider.
That's my vote. Vice Speaker.
On a motion to reconsider the actions of the body for recess.
There's a motion to reconsider the actions of the body. Is, we need to vote on the motion to reconsider first? Is there an objection? Yes, there is. All in favor of reconsidering, please raise your hand. Five, one, two, three, four, five, six. Motion fails. We proceed with the vote. Please proceed, clerk.
Senator Parkinson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, pass.
Point of inquiry, ma'am. How, how did, may I?
Please state your point of inquiry.
Yeah, the point of inquiry. How did their absence be translated into a pass?
I agree with you. Their absence is a refusal to vote. I think the clerk should wait for two minutes. A refusal to vote.
The second question is.
We will wait for two minutes.
Second question.
Thank you, Senator Fisher.
Thank you, ma'am. Another point of inquiry. They have not refused to vote. That is an entire fiction. They're not here.
Well, according to our rules. That, according to our rules.
No, it's according to your rule, not our.
Rules, Senator, you can read the rules, Senator Fisher. Thank you, clerk.
Senator Sinagastin.
Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tidgway. Senator Tidgway, aye. Speaker Terahy. Senator Canata, pass. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Canata, pass, nay. Senator Sinagastin, nay.
I'm about to call the vote. I believe the rules allow anyone who wants to change their vote before I call it or gavel it down to do so with the clerk. If not, then the vote on the amendment, amendment as amended fails. It's seven ayes and eight nays. Amendment fails.
Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you. I re, I move to recess until 2:00.
There's a motion to recess until 2:00. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
We're recess until 2:00.